Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order this evening. The Community Consolidated School District Forty-Six Board of Education Meeting Wednesday evening, April ninth, two thousand twenty-five here at Frederick School. Calling to order with a roll call, please.
Mack.
Here.
Braden.
Here.
Nash.
Present.
Albert.
Here.
La Croix.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
And Weedman.
Here.
McCowen.
Here.
Mata.
Here.
And Laguna's.
Here.
Fantastic. This meeting is in order, and welcome to our student representative this evening, sitting at the board table. Welcome to us here tonight. Please join me for the pledge. Thank you very much. I need a motion to approve this evening's agenda, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay.
Miller.
Aye.
Mack.
Aye.
Albert.
Aye.
Weedman.
Aye.
Braden.
Aye.
La Croix.
Aye.
And Nash.
Aye.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you very much. Do we have any public comments signed up down there?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Thank you. Okay, that moves us right into the opening presentations for this evening. We have the Grayslake Middle School Way of the Panther here, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Smith and his team.
All right, good evening, everyone. As always, we very much appreciate the invitation to come and be part of the board meeting, and tonight is going to be a kind of a mixed presentation of an update on some of the projects they've been working on and a few celebrations to end up our presentation tonight as well. We have invited some friends of ours from GMS to come with us tonight. So I'm gonna hand it over because this is all their work, and here we go.
As we've told you before, the Way of the Panther is a group of GMS students and educators who value leadership, productivity, and teamwork. We wanna help make every voice, big or small, heard, and our goal is to make GMS better for the future and leave a legacy of inspiration and passion for the upcoming students and staff members and continue our work.
I'm Violet, and we're working on No Place For Hate and Anti-Bullying right now. We've worked with our dean, Ms. Julian, to create print and post No Place For Hate posters around GMS that include a QR code that brings students and staff straight to reporting website. We are also going to continue working on finding a way to show the students and staff members how bullying really affects us and show things in a way that is better for our specific age group.
Good afternoon. My name is Augustin, and right now we're currently working on absenteeism in our school. We're continuing to look for ways that we can catch students up on missing school days. We also ask when we can grant them time to work at school and then when they should work on missing work or homework at home. We also wanna encourage students to have a better overall, overall better attendance, and we'd like to find ways to encourage more often attendance.
My name is Marilyn Mata, and I'll be talking about another one of our projects, Student-Led Tutoring, or SLT. Student-Led Tutoring can be a chance for students to learn and grow with their peers because sometimes teachers teach it, teachers teach it one way, but we learn it a different way. And we think that SLT can be held during Win Homework Club or sometime after school. We like posted a link for a letter to families more about SLT if you're interested, and then a link to apply to get tutored or to be a tutor. Thank you.
We're also working on trying to figure out a better way to spend our advisory time. So we've interviewed all our core class teachers on what they typically would do for advisory and if it would benefit the class. We've also brainstormed topics that could typically like replace the current activities we have, and some ideas we've come up with are updating like our activities, better suited topics for our schedule, free reading, study hall, or just removing it overall.
Hello, I'm Elise McCowen, and we are continuing to update our sensory rooms. You may ask how we better update our students and let staffs and parents know about the sensory rooms and let them know how to ask for them. We are thinking of sending parents a little bit of information about it, and they can ask to have their kids in it, or students can request it. We are going to add more information, maybe posters around the building to help students work through their feelings and needs, and we will continue to work with GMS staff to determine what materials and other items we can add to our sensory rooms to make them better for students.
Hi, I'm Ally Schultz, and for bathrooms and hallway times, we're looking to research ways to get new soap dispensers and more feminine products and equipment for all the bathrooms, and we're working to help our staff communicate the needs for safety and positive behavior in our bathrooms and hallways. We're working with the GMS administration to discuss ways to continue our update and update our online pass processes and look for ways to increase our hallway passing times.
Some positive Way of the Panther projects that we're just starting to get into. The Way of the Panther leadership team will consistently work to make GMS a positive place for all Panthers. Some other ideas that we are just starting to brainstorm possible solutions about are GMS Panther branding all around our building, making every space in GMS warm and inviting, break times during class, making GMS a place where all students are encouraged to make healthy choices, student lunchroom help to get all students to better organize waste, greeting families during fall and spring conferences, and the sixth and seventh grade school transition tours, graduation, bringing backpacks to class, and making dismissal better.
Congratulations. We wanna thank Ms. Corey. Will you please stand up? May we also please come to the front? Thank you very much, Ms. Corey, for your ten years of hard work. Thanks to your hard work. Our event last Friday raised more than six thousand five hundred dollars in donations. We've had fourteen hair donations, eighteen blood donations. We were also able to support the Avon Food Pantry and the Comfort Care Organizations with donations to help others in local and national communities. In their ten years of service, we've donated more than a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to the St. Beldrick's Foundation. And I've celebrated this great event with more than three, thirty-five hundred GMS students and families. We hope that these types of community service projects will continue to help our students know how much their voice and their actions can help those around them and to prove to be an activity that helps them continue to look for other ways to help those in need in the future.
We'd also like to thank Abby Mack. Will you please step up? She was our largest fundraiser for our St. Beldrick event this school year, and she raised over nine hundred and fifty dollars to donate.
Another thing you have is to Ms. Tangler. Please stand up. We wanna thank Ms. Tangler for all of her help in helping to ensure that all of our after-school activities continue to be focused on participation, sportsmanship, and success. In support of all her hard work, GMS has been awarded the twenty-twenty-five IESA Division Sportsmanship Award. Grayslake Middle School will be recognized at the IESA Celebration of Excellence banquet on April twenty-ninth in Bloomington. Our sportsmanship award banner will hang in our large gym for all to see and celebrate from that day forward. This group here is only a small portion of our Way of the Panther team, and we just want to remind you of all the hard-working students who are helping make GMS a better place.
And then last but not least, we just wanna say thank you. Thank you to all of our D forty-six board, school board members of education, Dr. Glickman, Ms. Gluck, and the D forty-six learning community for allowing us this time to introduce ourselves and giving us this opportunity to speak about what it means, what it makes, what makes GMS such a wonderful place to be. We look forward to seeing you next time with more updates on how our projects are going. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much for opening up the meeting with such a wonderful presentation. Do any of the board members have any questions or comments you'd like to share at this time? Thank you for sharing such wonderful stories, Mr. Miller.
And that's all. I wanna just say thank you so much for your work on top of being excellent students. We're so proud to hear what you're up to, and it's a very ambitious agenda, so thank you. And I especially wanna thank you for the work you're doing in the lunchroom. It's so important to reduce the food waste that goes into our landfills, and it makes all of us healthier. So thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to our next presentation for this evening, which is the Social Emotional Learning Program, Evolve. I'll hand it over to the team for that.
Hello, good evening. Nice to see you all. Nice to be at this board meeting and hear a lot, all the wonderful work that your students are doing. My name's Kathy Lanis, and I am... What's that? Oh, it's okay. I'll just introduce myself. Again, my name is Kathy Lanis. I'm the Director of Professional Development and Curriculum Design for Evolve by Youth Guidance. We have been here at D forty-six for the last two years now, and really excited to hear a little bit more about all of the wonderful work your educators are doing with all of your young people. I'm also joined by one of our Evolve coaches, and I'll let her introduce herself to you guys.
Hi, my name is Meganey Tagaki. I'm an Evolve coach, and so I work with the educators in your district to bring this program to your students.
So I'll start off by sharing a little bit of information about Youth Guidance as an organization. So we are based out of Chicago. We are a national nonprofit organization, and we were founded in nineteen twenty-four. So this year, we are celebrating a hundred and one years as an organization. And so at the very beginning of our inception, we started as a social service organization that was providing resources for young mothers and their children. And about fifty years ago, we transitioned into offering school-based programs because we believe that it is really important to meet young people where they are. So our first partnership was forged in nineteen seventy-four with the Chicago Public Schools, and to date, we are offering programs across the country. About twenty thousand students served last year, and we are now in Los Angeles, Kansas City, Washington DC, Boston, Pittsburgh, a few others. We're also in the UK. And so the program that we're here to talk to you about today is Evolve. We are a Tier Two Social Emotional Learning Program, and we were founded about three years ago. Our organization has been facilitating Tier Two Social Emotional Learning Groups for the last fifty years, and the organization really sought a need, saw a need to be able to figure out a way to scale the best practices of our organization and bring that nationwide. So we are here in D forty-six. We are also in eleven other school districts across the country, including the Chicago Public Schools. We are also in school districts in Florida, Texas, and in Michigan. And so these are, this is us. So we finally have the right presentation up. Thank you for the tech support on that. And so I am going to hand it over to Megan, who's gonna share a little bit more about our Evolve program model and exactly how it looks here at your district.
Could you do one more slide, please? Okay, so this is our program model, and so how Evolve works is first, it starts with a two-day in-person training for all of our lovely facilitators behind me. This is where they're introduced to our program, and they get to experience lesson activities straight from the curriculum, both as participants and as facilitators. This is also where they're introduced to Evolve Ed, which is our learning management system. And so online is where they access anything and everything related to Evolve. This is where our sixteen lesson curriculum is for them. They implement this weekly in circles of about eight to twelve students, and each lesson follows the same format to ensure reliability and consistency for students. So for example, some topics include belonging, positive identity development, and trust. And so in addition to that, we have other professional development opportunities. In each curriculum, in each lesson, before we, they implement it, we have interactive modules in which the facilitators get to click through, go through some of the interactive activities, learn about the lesson themes, some research behind it, and also facilitation tips for the specific lesson activities. We also have a monthly live virtual coaching session, and so that occurs across the district. So that includes Park, GMS, and Frederick. So there's this cross collaboration, and we all meet, talk about what's working, what could be better, and get support from peers as well as me as their coach. I also check in weekly with everyone, one-on-one, and send them lesson breakdowns for whatever lesson they're on that week. And then we'll do on-call coaching support when needed. So they can call, text, or email me throughout the week if something comes up, and they're preparing for their lesson. Lastly, we have the data side of things, and so we use facilitator and student feedback that just, that goes back into the program. We improve and we revise the program each year based on that feedback to make sure that our program is really fitting the needs of your district. And so if we go next, you've probably heard me talk a bit about the facilitator experience, and this is because we really emphasize the parallel process. What that is, is the growth and development of both facilitators, our circle leaders behind me, and the students. And so, you know, our team likes to say everyone's human. We all can grow in these skills for our whole lives. And so the parallel process is not just facilitators and students. It's also me as their coach, our larger Evolve team, our director Kathleen, and all of the community members here tonight. And so because of that, our facilitators play a crucial role in modeling those competencies for our youth, which is why we really emphasize that facilitator growth and development as well. So now I'll pass it over to them so you can hear from them.
Yes, so now you're gonna hear from some teachers and students who've been involved in Evolve for the last couple of years. So I am Dr. Tracy Tarasik, and I have been a reading specialist here at District Forty-six for twenty-five years, working mostly with older students, fifth grade and above. Evolve has really filled the need that I have when working with students, older students who struggle. Because we know that when older students struggle, very seldom is an educational intervention gonna be the key to helping them. There's a lot of other things to get through, and I have seen Evolve help students become more emotionally aware. Evolve has helped students learn more about themselves. It helps them with their motivation, their ability to engage in class, their self-efficacy. So I'm speaking tonight from a point of view of a person who's, who's done this for many, many years, and I have really experienced a difference with the students when we're working through Evolve, and it's been a great program and a great help for us.
Hi, I'm Yvonne Schmidt. I'm also a reading specialist at the district at GMS. It is my nineteenth year here at GMS and my thirty-first year teaching overall. And the reason why I say that is, as we were talking about the dual process. I am, because of Evolve, I think, a better teacher now than I've ever been. I'm more energized and just have a whole new way of looking at how I interact with the kids. And so I'd like to talk to you about how much the Evolve program, for lack of a better word, has evolved just in the year that we've had it. Last year, we had two groups, one at GMS and one at Park. And I remember the first day we did it, the nervousness, and now it's like the highlight of my week and of many students' week. I often hear, "Why do we have to wait till Friday to do it, or can't we do Evolve every day?" And we found a way when we were at GMS East, that was really important to me, that we still kept Evolve going, and we did. We found a place to have it and a way to split the lessons up. And what's really interesting, twenty-three students did it last year, and of all the seventh graders, I'll speak to GMS just because that's what I know, all the seventh graders who did it last year, every single one of them came back this year. They wanted to do it again and to be leaders, and to see them be participants last year and to grow into these leadership roles was pretty amazing. So as I said, we had two groups last year. This year, we have nineteen groups. We have had over two hundred and forty-one students. In fact, we've had students on a wait list. I had students that did it last year come around to every single advisory and talk it up at the beginning of the year. We've had kids already asking, seventh graders, "Can we be in it next year? Can we do it again?" So I just think the, some really important statistics there are just how much the program has grown in the one year since we had it. It says a lot about the success and how much we believe in the program. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Stephanie Helms. I am an eighth-grade special education teacher over at GMS. I've been at GMS now for six years, and I've been a facilitator for the past two years. I did wanna share, one of our facilitators over at Park, Shannon couldn't be here tonight. Her kiddo is sick, so I just am gonna share her portion, and then I'll get into my spiel here. As a newcomer to the Evolve team and leading a group of sixth graders, I have greatly benefited from the combination of group coaching and individualized support. The collaborative approach through whole-group monthly sessions has helped me grow my skills alongside my peers, while the one-on-one coaching has provided me with personalized guidance tailored to my specific needs. I feel well-supported, and what stands out the most is how the continuing education and professional development provided by my facilitator and colleagues across the district have helped me not just as a teacher, but as a professional striving to continue and grow to support my students in the best way possible. I wanted to give a little background. I did my graduate school research capstone project last year, and I completed it last spring, and I actually chose to collect research and data on whether Evolve was impacting students within the building. So I looked at the five SEL core competencies that make up the Evolve lessons in the curriculum, and it was because I was so passionate about the program that that's what I decided to do come the spring as we had been working on it throughout the year. We can see just from the data that the program is so beneficial to both students and also staff. Also saw positive changes in their classrooms and throughout the building. And I just wanted to go ahead and share just a few data points. I could sit here forever and talk about how great the program is, but just wanted to highlight a few. From pre- and post-surveys, sixty percent of students saw an increase in their social awareness, and forty-two percent saw an increase in their responsible decision-making. Staff noted on pre- and post-surveys that relationship skills and self-awareness were the most practiced competencies throughout the building and within the classroom. And then lastly, when I observed students within the classroom setting in various subject areas and grade levels, relationship skills were the most prevalent out of the four core competencies. Thank you. And I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to Grant, I believe.
Hi, my name's Grant Chapman. I've been with the school district for two years and have facilitated for two years. I'm a GMS school social worker, so I've been kind of part of a lot of these Tier Two groups, and absolutely, this is hands-down the best one I've ever been part of. The way that they're involved with us, and you know, I'm gonna say, like, protect us, I think, as facilitators in a sense that it's trauma-informed, but there's definitely a boundary there. I think they equip us, you know, as the teachers, facilitators, to know how to navigate that while also making it an absolutely open, vulnerable space for students to be just how they are. You know, we'll have students that, they can be silly. They can also say, "I'm so proud of my mom for, you know, going to rehab," or something like that, or something that they've been struggling with. And you see a place where you enter it, and just like students kind of are expected to enter it, we're also expected and actually have to be trained to be able to we're also expected and actually have to be trained to be able to take off kind of our title hat, school social worker, or a classroom teacher, or a reading specialist, and be able to actually just be the kid's facilitator, like, circle facilitator. And the rules that they sign, the group norms they come up with, we sign also. And I think that's hard for us maybe to step out of, to not treat it like a classroom, but treat it like the Evolve, you know, circle that it is. And that's where the coaching really comes in handy. They individualize it completely for us. They learn our building logistics. As a social worker, I only had an office. I had to have somehow a classroom that I could rely on, because the students need that consistency. And like, Megan worked with our school, our district. They understand it, and they also problem-solve with us. And so, you know, it's been amazing the amount of effort they put in for us. And we've seen students get excited about the group, be able to check in and really not care about whatever clicks, but actually support one another, and then also bring it back into the classroom. And so it's just really brought confidence all around, and it's been super-successful. And so we're just really happy to have this one here with us and just have them supporting us as if they were just, you know, our coworker next to us. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Matt Malamed. I'm one of the principals over at Park Campus. I think Grant really just said that all well of what the program does for everyone involved. But we talk a lot as a board and as a school district, as an administrative team, about our district mission, and it's posted on the board. And we talk about empowering learners. We talk about creating equity and cultivating community. And this program is really that in action. It's taking our mission and it's living it on a regular basis where the students and staff members find belonging. And this group are all really excited about the work they're doing. They're really excited about the impact they're hearing it's having on students, because the students are telling them. And we've asked a few students to come up here today to share their firsthand account of, of what it's meant to them. Park students, you want to come up first?
I'm Callie.
And I'm Josie.
And we're part of the Park Campus Eighth Grade Evolve 2024 to 2025.
Today, we're just going to talk about some things that we like to do and enjoy about Evolve. So I'll start off with something that's helped me, such a little thing that's had so much impact on me, is setting personal boundaries. We like to talk about things that make us feel uncomfortable and ways to deal with them and avoid in certain situations.
The next one is creating a bond with other students in Evolve. We create it, we create bonds with students in Evolve by working together on like fun little games and talking about other things and coming up with ideas to like communicate with each other.
We also learn about how to support others. So every Friday during our Evolve period, we check out, we check in at the beginning and at the end. We have different topics every week, and it helps us to learn how to support each other and just come together as a whole community.
Next is learning how to calm ourselves and clear our brain. We do that by sometimes like laying on the floor, or some people decide that they want to like sit in a chair. And Ms. Hearn will put like music on or like any noise on, and we'll sit there and listen to it for like two minutes or so, just grounding ourselves.
And then we also talk about building self-confidence by just talking about things we go through and helping to support each other. And it helps me build self-confidence and make me feel that I have an importance and a purpose in the school.
And last is learning that Evolve can make school a fun place and look forward to, look forward to something during the week. We look forward to Evolve during the week because Ms. Hearn makes it such a fun environment, and she always has like fun activities and games to do. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Callie and Josie. Ally, I think, from Grey's Lake Middle School, could you come up and share some words?
Hi, I'm Ishaerts. And they said pretty much what Evolve is, but it's something that people, that students look forward to, because it's like a time where you can talk about how you feel, and there's like fun games to play. And it's just like, it's calming and it's relaxing. And it's, they said it pretty much all.
Thank you, Ally. We had one other student who wasn't able to be here tonight, but they had a lot to share as well. Overall, we're just thrilled with the impact it's having. We're grateful for our partners from Youth Guidance, and we're grateful for the students and staff that are making it fly, because without the role that they're all playing, it wouldn't be what it is. And we've been searching for that tool to help us find that sense of belonging and connect. So thank you again to our students, thank you to the staff, and thank you Kathleen and Megan. And thank you, Board, for allowing us to make this possible.
Thank you very much for sharing that incredible story. And what I love about the presentation is the idea of circles. Everything operates in circles, and it's really, really good to see that in play here in our communities. Thank you for sharing that. Other comments or questions from other board members? Thank you very much. Oh, sorry. Sorry, pardon me, pardon me. Yes, there, Elise, right?
I would just like to say that as a student who was in Evolve, it really did change my mood in the classroom and even at home at, at sports. And at the end of the session, we had a little like party to celebrate everything we had accomplished in Evolve. And I feel like that was like a really happy time, but it was also very sad, because we only got to be in Evolve a part of the year, because there were so many students who wanted to be in it. So I'd love to see like maybe a longer Evolve session, because it was a lot of fun. I made a lot of friends. And they didn't, everybody came from a different background, and they all had their own. It was a very inclusive group, and it was very comforting.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Before we move on to our next presentation, parents and students, you are welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting, but you are also welcome to sneak out right now if you'd like.
Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. I'll wait. Okay, next on our agenda this evening is the presentation on the multilingual and bilingual program recommendations here in the district. And I'm handing that over to Mrs. Glock and her team.
Hello, good evening. We are super-excited tonight to be able to share with you our multilingual and bilingual programming recommendation. I don't know if that's this one. So we, we're going to talk a lot about the process that we went through in order to get to this re- this recommendation, as well as share some details with you. As we think about all of this, it definitely encompasses our entire mission. We are going to be talking about how we're empowering our learners. And I would say throughout the process, we empowered ourselves as learners and how we're going to continue to create equity within our system. And thinking about how do we cultivate our community and our community of learners as we're talking through the recommendations that we're bringing tonight. So this all relates back to two of our curricular goals in our, in our strategic plan. The first one has to do with just updating our teaching, learning, and assessment in relation to utilizing an equity lens to create culturally responsive learning environments. So that is very much a piece of all of this recommendation. And then the second, in, within the second curricular goal, part of that was to look at our dual-language programming. And so as I shared earlier in the year when I did our data update, I also shared that we were going to be talking about our multilingual programming as well in general. This also fits back with our Board Policy six forty, six-point forty, around curriculum development and adoption. And so thinking about how are we ensuring that our, that we're offering opportunities for our resident English learners, our ELs, or MLs, as we call them here, our multilingual learners, to achieve at high levels? So really thinking about how are we doing that? And what are we doing to ensure that that's happening? I do have some PDT members here with me to help, but I also have some sitting in the audience as well. So we have lots of people here to, that have been part of this work. And I'm going to turn it over to Amanda.
Hello, my name is Amanda Lervie, and I teach at Prairie View as a multilingual teacher. I loved being a part of this planning, planning and design team. So how we created the team, first, they looked for staff volunteers, and then we created the team. We had multiple meetings that were scheduled that we were a part of. We reviewed current and historical data related to the students in our district. And then we reviewed research regarding different types of program models. We had different presentations from a variety of school districts about the models that they used. Then they also talked about their, the positives and negatives. And we also completed a SWOT analysis of different types of supports for students. And then we provided input on our recommendation. So we had a great group of people that kind of represented our entire district. We had Martha Ibañez from Ivan, Jamie Parker from District Office, Nivea Talanda from Ivan, Barbara Zara from Ivan, Laura Golden from Frederick, Valeria Ramos from Frederick, James Goshi from Frederick, Carrie Mizinski from Frederick, Lily Earp from Prairie View, myself from Prairie View, Jorge Dominguez García from GMS, Amy Forrest from GMS, Jessica Actor from Park, Kelly Murphy and Tammy Singer from Park, Haley Sesterhan from Prairie View, Kim Deg from Prairie View, Brianna Penton from Woodview, Chris Wolk from the District Office, and Vanessa Morales from Park. So our proposal overview presents a comprehensive plan to support multilingual students in kindergarten through eighth grade through a two-way dual-language program and differentiated co-teaching models. The goal is to provide equitable access to high-quality education while at the same time fostering language acquisition, academic success, and cultural inclusion. By implementing these targeted language development opportunities, our hope is that the program ensures that all students, regardless of their proficiency level, receive the necessary support to thrive academically in our district.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nivea Talanda, and I'm a bilingual teacher at Ivan, a kindergarten teacher at Avon. And our objective with this two-way dual-language program, K through A, is to provide a fifty-fifty, two-way, two-teacher dual-language model where English and Spanish are used for instruction, promoting bilingualism, biculturalism, and biliteracy for both native and non-native Spanish speakers. Participation in programming. Non-native, non-native Spanish speakers who choose to participate will enter a lottery to participate in the two-way dual-language program. Native Spanish speakers identified through the district screening process will automatically be placed in the program if they wish to participate and have the linguistic ability. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jamie Parker. I am our district TOSA. And for the two-way dual-language program for K.A., we're looking at grade-level implementation. So the program will begin in kindergarten during the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, first grade for twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, and will continue through fifth grade with gradual roll-up. And then once students enter sixth grade, students will participate in a Spanish heritage class in lieu of English social studies course. This course is planned to include all of the same content as social studies courses, but it will be taught in Spanish and include some additional content. Further decisions will be made as the program is rolled up. And then as far as parent commitment, parents and students must commit to staying in the program at least until fifth grade with the intent to stay through eighth grade to ensure long-term success.
Hello, I'm Barbara Zara. I'm the principal of Ivan's Under School. And I'm going to continue talking a little bit about our dual-language program. And we want to stress that the current planning on the side of some of the slides is because this is what our preliminary thoughts are. And as we have our subcommittees, we will continue to make changes as we see fit to the decisions. The languages distribution model will be fifty-fifty. So they'll be learning part of their day in English and part of their day in Spanish. Right now, what we're thinking is that they will receive math and literacy in both English and Spanish. And then science and social studies will alternate by unit between Spanish and English. But the time will be fifty-fifty model will allow students to be taught in both English and Spanish daily throughout the day. The makeup of our classes, it will be, each class will be made up of both native and non-native speakers. So students will receive either Spanish or English instruction for part of their day, and then rotate and do the opposite for the other part of their day. We're going to provide, what we need to do to help us prepare and support this program is provide professional development to support our English and Spanish teachers, pairs, because they're going to be grouped together, build a schedule to support students' split days, create family information nights and promotion, and develop a lottery system in case we have a lot of interested people and have too many non-native Spanish speakers that apply to attend the program.
Good evening, I'm James Goshi, principal of Frederick School. And I'm going to shift a little bit and talk about the requirements of a TPI model or a transitional program of instruction. So to start with, in going over those requirements, there's really no technical minimal amount of time that we're required to provide EL services to students. In the past, there was kind of a grouping of a high, moderate, or low designation that used to be tied back to state funding before evidence-based funding became the primary mechanism. Districts themselves are determining what level of services is going to be appropriate for each student based on English proficiency level. And the State Board of Education would be expecting that a student with a lower English proficiency level would have a higher level of services. As we kind of continue looking at those requirements, any district also needs to be able to justify why a student either is or is not getting a specific level of services. Districts also need to be prepared to show that the decisions we're making are based on sound educational theory, research, and that we're using, you know, appropriate and adequate resources. And then finally, whatever program we use has to result in like, you know, positive outcomes, academic outcomes for our ML students. That's a huge priority. And then just kind of looking at a continuum of sports and services and what it might look like in a TPI model. On the far left, you know, just simple collaboration, discussing types of strategies or effective, you know, language models or whatever we can do to kind of help beef up our instruction that way. In the middle, a co-taught or push-in type model, where we're having our, our teachers push in and help support students that way. And then finally, a little bit more restrictive, a pull-out type model, where the students are receiving instruction directly, usually by an ML teacher. So just a different continuum of types of supports and services there.
Hi, I'm Amy Forrest. I'm one of the seventh and eighth grade math specialists at GMS. I am not a labeled ML teacher, but I have a lot of ML students. And I, I'm just grateful I got to be on this PDT. I learned a lot. It was, it was great. So just, I'm excited too for our non-labeled ML teachers to be able to have this co-teaching experience and gain more tools with working with our students. So our, for our K5s, our ML students are going to be integrated into the general education classrooms, but receiving their targeted linguistic support there. And we're going to do it with three different ways. Some students might apply for, be eligible for all. So this co-teaching model, we learned about six different models, six different ways you could teach a lesson and get the two teachers working together. And so this would be an ML-trained teacher to come in and work with either a homeroom teacher or a content teacher. And really- or a content teacher and really get the whole, the specialized language instruction right in the class. There'll be additional support for our newcomers where that will actually be pulled out by the ML teacher, really to help make them more comfortable with their social and academic vocabulary and help with their transition here. And then our WIN program, our district-wide intervention program, there will be, again, there will be more individualized attention on what the students need and they can be eligible for that. That will be more so based on our data, whether it's informative data in class, the access WEDA data, or scores, excuse me, our NWEA data, and then really just anything that kind of pops out for our student needs. Our 6-8 model, very similar. And we're really focusing on the language proficiency when we're deciding, you know, like our students who need the most support. So again, they're getting the targeted linguistic support in their mainstream classes. And again, the ML teachers will be pushing in and working together, again, with our six models. So there's a lot of PD planned for our teachers to be comfortable working together and ensuring the success of all of our students, including our non-ML students. So it really is going to be a win-win. The focus will be in ELA and science, again, with the heavy language and giving the support in those classes, but not, not limiting to only that. Again, our newcomers, to help make them feel more comfortable, they'll get more pull-out attention, dealing with the social and academic vocabulary and helping with their transition. And then our WIN time, so that again, will be based on their formative data, their access and WEDA scores, NWEA data, and really just any kind of student needs. So, very excited.
And as Amy shared at the beginning of that, with this, this is part of why we called this a differentiated co-teaching model, is we might have students that are co-taught and getting newcomer support and getting support during WIN. So they might get all three. It's all going to be differentiated based on student proficiency and student needs. So we're going to be digging into that a little bit further. So what are some other things that we needed to consider? The first is we do have students who are duly identified. So we have students that are identified both as multilingual and students that also have an IEP. So as we're having those conversations, those students' needs are going to be identified through the IEP process as they are right now. And then determination of programs and services will be outlined through the students' IEP and through those discussions. We had a lot of conversation about students who move in mid-year. We have that all the time on a regular basis. So when students who are multilingual move into the district mid-year, the program is going to ensure that they will be placed in the appropriately, appropriate placement. So if they are a native Spanish speaker, we're going to leave some extra seats in our dual-language program so that students can go into the dual program. And in addition to that, if they need some of the other services, they'll be able to get those as well. We're going to utilize regular formative assessments in order to make WIN decisions. We do that right now anyway. We're going to continue to do that in order to provide additional interventions as necessary. One of the things that many of us have been focused on is looking at what are specific language needs for students, and so how do we ensure that we're providing those during that WIN time? So we're going to keep using regular formative assessment for that. And then the last piece of, another piece of consideration, and Amy touched on this a little bit, is that piece of professional development. We know, and part of why we're not implementing until the 26, 27 school year, is because we know we're going to need to provide a lot of support for all of our staff. This is a really big shift. And so we want to make sure that we're providing best practices and training for our co-teachers and language, around the language development. As Amy was sharing, there are co-teaching models and we want to make sure that they're comfortable with that. We've had conversations at the principal, at the building level, talking about our schedules are going to need to ensure that our co-teachers have co-planning time built into their, into their schedule because that's really important so that we're doing this well and we're ensuring that our, you know, we have two really robust teachers and what's happening within the classroom. So we want to make sure that we are equipping our staff. You may also remember that part of the opportunity review shared that one of the layers of that, one of the findings was for us to provide more professional development related to our multilingual learners. And so this is going to allow for some of that as well. We know, and this is a really important piece, and this is some of where the community comes in, is thinking about parent and community engagement. And so we are developing a communication plan, and I'm going to talk a little bit about some of that in a minute, about the changes for what's coming. We want to make sure that we're informing families about the two-way dual-language programming. We want to make sure that families understand the lottery system for non-Spanish-speaking families. There's more that goes into that, right? And then also just informing everyone who is receiving services this year or right now currently about shifts that are going to be happening in the future. Throughout the process of making these shifts and these changes, we will continue to regularly evaluate the effectiveness. We'll use student achievement data, including access IAR, our MAP scores. But in addition to that, another really important piece is the teacher feedback. And so we're going to need, we're going to take that in order to help to refine the model. So we'll do that on a regular basis in order to make some adjustments. So what do we still need to do? So what, and somebody already said it earlier, is around the subcommittees. And so we're going to have some subcommittees. As we met, we had our last PDT meeting last week. And at that meeting, we had a conversation about what, what work still needs to be done and how do we break into some smaller groups in order to do that? So right now, these are the subcommittees that we are planning to have. We may determine that we need more than this. But we're going to start those this school year and will continue through next school year. One of the subcommittees is going to focus on that communication because that's really important in communicating our timeline. We're going to have a subcommittee working on developing those family information nights and what those can look like and how we can invite people, but also what kinds of information we can share. We're going to have a subcommittee focusing specifically on professional development planning for our staff, looking at those schedule logistics for the two-way dual program. So we were, Barbara talked a little bit about that piece of how we're going to balance out the Spanish and the English throughout the school day. So we need to look at what does that look like in a schedule? And then we're going to have some time to talk about alignment of the WEDA standards and framework to instruction because that is really important in this whole process as well and what, where that fits into our co-teaching, but also into our dual language. And then we're, we're going to revisit and review our identification processes at both the district and the building level in relation to our students who are multilingual. As we're talking about all of these, again, if some other things come up, we will add more subcommittees, but this is right now where we're heading. So we've had some conversation through the PDT about considering some pilot time next year. And so what that can look like is continuing next year with our kindergarten bilingual still as a one-teacher model, but utilizing one of those classrooms to be 50/50. So working, trying to work, work on that, having half the day in Spanish, half the day in English, but still with a one-teacher model instead of a two-teacher model. So we wouldn't have non-native speakers in that class. We would still keep it the way that we currently identify students for our dual-language programming, but try and work, instead of right now, our kindergarten is 90% Spanish, 10% English. So switching that to the 50/50. And then the other piece for pilot is implementation of co-teaching at one grade level at one school next year. And we're going to be reaching out to staff to talk about that. That leads us to full implementation. So that would be again, in the 26, 27 school year, so not next year, the following year. And that would be that we would start our two-way dual, two-teacher model at kindergarten. Again, it's going to roll up slowly, so it's going to take us a long time to get all the way up. But as we've learned a lot about dual-language models, that's the way that is done well. And so we will continue the current dual-language programming in grades one through eight in the 26, 27, and then it'll roll up after that. And then we will move to that co-teaching model and newcomer support, that differentiated model that I shared, that was shared, that Amy shared with you. So that leads us to what questions you might have. There's a lot.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the board for questions coming up.
Vaguely remember, a few years ago, we went to a late-exit model for Spanish speakers. Is this replacing that late-exit model or is this like, going to all be in conjunction with that?
It kind of incorporates all that into it. Yeah, so as, so with our current dual model, we are looking at, we have that, it go all the way up through eighth grade. We will be, it's kind of going to be a balance of that because we're going to, right now, our current planning is to finish the dual, the 50/50 in their day at fifth grade and then move into a little bit diff, only one class out of their day at middle school.
Like the late-exit will kind of like phase out over time?
It's going to kind of phase out over time, yeah.
So I have to just acknowledge that the former cheerleader in me is, I'm tempering her way down because I'm so excited about this program. So thank you, first of all, for all the work that you've been doing on this and the research and the logistics and the efficient use of resources from testing to, just so many things were popping out as I was listening. So I'm super excited. I do have a question though, a couple of them. So you mentioned that you started your process with looking at data. And I'm curious what you're expecting we might see once the program is established. Like what should we as a board be listening for as, when you give your updates on student performance in particular?
Yeah, so one of the pieces that we've learned from this is that the research is showing that as we're looking at students are learning simultaneously, that it will increase their achievement. But it's also going to give more opportunity for us to focus on some of those standards. So they're going to be getting double ELA instruction, right? And double math instruction. So it's going to be able, it's going to be an opportunity for us to improve our achievement, but also overall improve, I mean, there's so much research behind bilingualism, biculturalism, right? And so as we're looking at all of that, how do we support? So our data should start to show some improvement as far as proficiency data, specifically for that student group.
Okay. And then I know that you love data. I'm wondering if there's a way, and I don't expect you to answer this right now. I'm just curious, if there's a way to look at the interaction between what's going on with Evolve and then what's going on in the classroom performance? I think that would just be fascinating. So for whatever that's worth, I'm just curious about that. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
I was excited, I was not a cheerleader, but also super excited. The theater kid in me wants to bring him in a song, I don't know. I'll spare you though. I'm really curious about, I know that we have 60 languages in the district.
Yeah, that's 50, yeah.
Yeah. How do the other languages wrap in and around this? Is it like parallel or does it get wrapped in? Just curious how that, you know, how that proceeds.
Yeah, that's a great question. So that's part of why we were looking at this co-teaching model, right? So in how do we support? So right now, if you look at our current model, our students get pulled out for their ELA class or their literacy class. And what we have is we have, it's not dependent on their language proficiency. And so that's part of why we're looking at this language proficiency model in order to say, okay, let's support all of those languages because we want to ensure our multilingual students are going to benefit from all of this too. So it's all kind of incorporated into that as we're looking at that. And I think one thing I should probably mention too, and I know next, at our next board meeting, we will hopefully be bringing Director of Multilingual Services to, you know, to our new hire. So we are for sure going to be incorporating that person into all of this work to be able to help to support where we're heading. So yeah. I can. So yeah, so thanks Barbara. So the other piece that we had talked about was if a student who is multilingual but is not a native Spanish speaker, they can still request to be put in, to be into the dual-language program. So they could still take one of those non-native Spanish-speaking seats. There's lots of options.
I'll hop in for a minute. As a language teacher, this is brilliant and I could probably ask questions for the rest of the night. But I'm wondering too, this also offers an opportunity to have concurrent conversations with the high school district as well as they prepare to move into the opportunities for language learning in the high schools as well as the SEAL of biliteracy.
Correct.
Which is, which is fantastic. So I guess there's no real question in there except for the, I'm interested always in the professional development models that will support the teachers who traditionally might not be world language teachers but are going to be preparing those students to then continue to excel in there. So I guess one thing to, I would be interested in is what, similar to what Mrs. Miller asked, what would we be looking for as a board to support the professional development needs of our teachers in the district? And how can we lean into that to make sure that we're ready to support whatever you need for it?
Yeah, and we appreciate that. And I think some of that's going to come out of the subcommittee work too as we start to talk even more about what are the needs as we're thinking about the professional development. We'd have a whole lot, long list of things that we are already thinking about, but thinking, how do we continue that? I should mention too, and thank Dr. Diaz, who was part of all of this work to start. And she had been working with District 127 to start, to talk about that SEAL biliteracy piece, so yeah.
Thanks, Dr. Gluck. This was a really comprehensive overview and I was curious to hear a little bit more about the WEDA standards and what like type of directional guidance it provides for how we plan on shaping our initiatives here.
Yeah, so the WEDA standards are can-do descriptors that helped us to know what is it that our students who are language learners should be doing and what they should be accomplishing. So that's one way for us to know if they're working towards the levels of proficiency that we want them to be at. They very closely align with access testing and so it brings in the four domains and so it will help us to be able to look at how are we ensuring that our students are getting exactly what they need when it comes to their language development?
And just as a follow, quick follow, does WEDA then come in and assess the effectiveness of the program once we've been logged?
They do not. But they have tools for us to be able to measure it.
Got it. Thank you.
Well, thank you for all the work it took to get to this point and for sharing with us all that information. It's really, it's very exciting. As I think about how the size of this program, as the program matriculates to all the different grade levels in about 10 years' time.
Yep.
Am I to think about the size of the overall program to be about two times that of our multilingual population, depending on interest, of course?
I mean, if you think about that we will have two teachers, it could, yeah. So it's really, that's why as we were thinking, I mean, as I, as we have conversations about our mission, it absolutely is empowering our learners and really thinking about how are we ensuring that we are building this group of students that are able to, hopefully eventually, be able to get their SEAL biliteracy when they get to high school?
And then our current multilingual population now is about what percent of our total students? Is it somewhere around 15 or 20%?
We have about a little over 700 students that are in our...
So one-fifth, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Albert?
I don't have any questions beyond what my colleagues have already asked, but I just want to reiterate my excitement for this type of program for our community.
Thanks.
We do have questions from our student representative this evening, Marilyn?
Thank you. I wanted to ask, what languages do you offer? And if it's mainly just Spanish, like how, sorry, like, and if it's just Spanish, then how is it like more out there? Does that make sense?
Yeah. So the dual-language program will currently just be in Spanish. And so that would be the Spanish-English. We don't currently offer any other languages than that. The high school does, so when we get to high school, we could, there's opportunities there. As we look at dual-language programming, we are, when we have more than 20 students who speak a language within a school, that's when we start to look at adding bilingual programming. So that is something that we will continue to look at and consider.
Elise?
This is more from Ms. Parker. I was just wondering, when you came up, you said you were a TOSA. Can you clarify what that means?
Yes, I can. You probably see me at GMS. So TOSA is a teacher on special assignment. So I'm a teacher, just like all the ones in your building. But I support our new staff members, so I look at the mentor program and all of the new teachers that you get in GMS and I help them. So you've seen me in some of those classes. But I'm in all seven buildings across the entire district. Okay?
Augustine, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I do. So I just wanted to say, this program seems like a very fantastic idea. This will definitely give multilingual students the best possible opportunities to succeed. and I'm very, very proud, I guess, very happy, I guess, that this is going through. And, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Can I add something for you quickly?
Sure, Dr. Wolf.
Sorry. We're going to be adding more kids to the multilingual program. That does not necessarily mean that we will see an increase in staffing because we will, is this on? Like, okay, I can't hear it off the speakers. Because of what they shared earlier is that in the morning, a student might have an English-speaking teacher, and in the afternoon, they'd have a Spanish-speaking teacher, and so, they would just flip-flop. So, we have same amount of staff addressing twice as many kids. Not doubling our staff, not doubling our student bodies, but receiving the services.
Thank you. Thank you for this tremendous work. Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to the board report portion of our agenda this evening. I am going to start with our student representatives this evening for board reports. This is the time at which all the board members share anything, if they have anything, to share with all of us, and I'll begin at the far end there with Marilyn.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Montal, I'm Mary. I will, I will be giving the fine arts update. So, our spring play took place a couple of weeks back, and we've done something at GMS that we've never done before. We invited all D-46 fourth graders across the board to come and watch our play Wizard of Oz. It was a huge success, and all the kids onstage and in crowd had a really fun, had really fun with this adventure, and we'd hope to do it again next year. Our GMS symphonic band, wind ensemble, and choir will all participate in their staying competition at the end of April. All ensembles had great performances at Waukegan High School during their sectional performances last month. And lastly, our GMS jazz band will perform at the Jazz Showcase in Chicago this month. To our knowledge, the GMS jazz band is the only middle-school ensemble to ever perform at this historic venue. Our band has been invited and played to perform at this venue for nine years now. Thank you.
Elise?
Hello, I will be updating you on our school. Just a reminder that we will be graduating on Sunday, June 1st, at Grayslake North High School. And our Washington, DC trip, including GMS and Park eighth graders, it takes off from GMS early morning on Wednesday, January 4th, or June 4th. There are 52 eighth graders from across both schools attending the trip this year. We also have 59 GMS students and four staff members going to the Future Quest Field Trip tomorrow night at the Lake County Tech Campus. Students attending the trip get to choose three learning activities from the list of 19 different class options that they offer to the middle-school students of Lake County. The list of students who attended this activity last year had a great experience and learned about what the Tech Campus has to offer. Finally, we'd like to thank our O&amp;M team for their work over spring break. Members of the team helped to clean out two big dumpsters of unneeded materials from our band room and custodial areas of GMS. Further, the team also dug out and built a new long-jump pit for our students to practice during the spring track season. Thank you.
Thank you, Elise. Augustine?
All right, good afternoon, then. I would like to update you about our sports, sports programs at our school right now. Our GMS Frederick School and Park Wrestling Team earned a second-place conference award. Is it open? Okay. And regional and sectional championships this past season that ended in the second week of March. We had eight wrestlers make it to the state tournament with three of our wrestlers making it to the podium. We had a third place and two fifth-place finishers this past season. This weekend, our GMS and Frederick School Science Olympiad teams will be participating in their state tournaments at the University of Illinois. We wish good luck to all teams. And last weekend, our GMS bowling team went to their sectional tournament, and one of our bowlers, Matthew DaVinci, will be progressing to the state, to the state tournament. And we have almost 187 athletes from our GMS and Frederick School on our track team. We love the participation that we are going for this, this spring, spring track season.
Thank you to our student members of the board. We appreciate those updates. I'll just keep going down the line, Mrs. Albert.
Just real quick, I want to put a plug in for the next IASB Advocacy Ambassador webinar. It's April 25th at noon. You can check your email from IASB. I just have really enjoyed getting to these when I can because it's convenient, it's over lunch, works for some of us, not all of us. It lets us know what's going on at the Capitol. They monitor a lot of legislation for us, and it just makes it easier for us to kind of keep on track with things. And then, you get a chance to ask questions and provide feedback to the IASB Governmental Relations Team, and I find that to be probably the most valuable piece of it. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mrs. Albert. Mr. LaCroy? Thank you. Mrs. Nash?
Very, good evening, CCSD 46. I just want to take a moment of personal privilege to say how good it is to be back and thank my board colleagues for providing me the ability to take care of some personal things and recover and get back here in the saddle. I also want to thank the community at large because not only did the board colleagues, you know, lean in and check on me over the last couple of months, but the community at large. And when you think about Grayslake, and if you had to give it one word, like, tell me what Grayslake is in one word, it's community. And so, whether it's been here, you know, with my board colleagues or my extended Grayslake community, I appreciate, you know, the love and support over the last couple of months, so thank you. And then, in terms of what I like to be top of mind to the community is that the Grayslake Area Public Library will be at the CLC Maker Fair this Saturday. So, that's always a pretty cool opportunity over at the College of Lake County. We had the ability to be there as part of GMS East on that campus for a little while. And so, it's always a great family-friendly event to promote science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. So, check it out if your calendar is free this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Mrs. Braden?
I just got two quick things. I was going to welcome Ms. Nash back to the table and tell her that it feels like the universe is in the right place again with you here, so really, really good to see you back. I'm going to continue on the community theme. The Grayslake Better Together Pride Parade is celebrating its fifth year on Sunday, June 8th, and I'm very, very proud to say that D-46 has been there since the beginning. So, it will also be our fifth year of participation. To me, it's one of the most fun and uplifting days in our community and in our district because we get to go out and say to our families, our staff, and our students, we see you, we appreciate you, you are welcome in our community, and you are supported in our community. So, I invite, I'll send out details to the board, but always invite, of course, board members, staff members, teachers, anyone who wants to come join. We will get the word out, but mark your calendars for Sunday, June 8th at noon. I have Corny, my, the unicorn float, ready to go on the top of the car again, and special invite to D-127 that we would love to see you there this year.
Thank you, Mrs. Braden. I will echo the comments. It's very nice to have you back at the table, Mrs. Nash. Thank you. I would like to welcome, I believe we have Grayslake Central students here, am I correct? Is that right? Okay, just, just the four of you in the front here? That's it, okay? No, no, where in the? All right, okay, all right, five, right in the back there? All right, fantastic. I'm assuming for part of a government class, yes, okay, all right, good. Well, welcome, it's always good to have you here. If you have any questions, please let us know. If you need a picture, we're always here for autographs and pictures and all that good kind of stuff. Good. It's right, we're starting to charge per signature, never used to be there. Mrs. Miller?
So, I'll start and echo what has already been said, but so nice to have you back, Mrs. Nash. Glad to see you. Also have a book recommendation. If you are looking for some exciting reading, this is called Educational Economics. I wish I had had it as a brand-new board member. It is so helpful to have school finance from the school perspective, so it builds it from the school up to federal programs like Title I and some others that I know that we're thinking about. So, highly recommend it. It's written by Marguerite Rosa, who teaches for, is it ASBO, right? Not Illinois ASBO, but the Association for School Board Officials. And she's also at Georgetown, yeah. So, highly recommend it. Also, the Community Engagement Food Drive is April 21st through the 25th, so if anyone is looking to donate food, that's another opportunity to support the Avon Township Food Pantry. And finally, the Center for Green Schools is hosting a free workshop on May 22nd in Skokie, and this is focused, I'm just going to read it to you. This free interactive workshop will spotlight cases of schools and districts that have improved energy performance and healthy indoor conditions in aging facilities. The focus will be on managing constrained budgets and logistical challenges of HVAC and envelope upgrades in existing schools to achieve high-performing, safe, and healthy schools. So, that is May 22nd at Oakton College in Skokie. If anyone's interested, thought it might be of interest, especially because we're going into some envelope, building envelope improvements, and we are adding boilers and chillers to our HVAC systems. So, just wanted to make you aware of that.
Mr. Weedman? You're done. All right, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, that brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Glickman is under the weather this evening, so if she is listening to this YouTube channel this evening, we wish her a speedy recovery and see you soon back. But I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Gluck in her stead.
Thanks. So, I have two topics tonight. The first is, I just wanted to share that last week, all five of our buildings with kindergarten had kindergarten meet and greets. So, always a fun time for incoming kindergarteners to come. The students had tours of the buildings and kindergarten classrooms. They had some opportunities to ask questions, so many talked to some of our teachers, so it was, and then had some student representatives there at some of our buildings, too. So, really exciting time as we're starting to think about next year and our incoming kindergarteners. And then, in, also, as we're thinking about next year with our registration, we are, we currently have 834 students registered, which is about 25 percent of our returning students. And you might have seen some of the registration signs around as a reminder to register, and I would just like to publicly thank Leslie Armstrong for getting those created and out at our schools. So, that's all I have for the superintendent report tonight.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gluck. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda for this evening. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the personnel addendum that was sent to us earlier.
I'll move. I'll second.
Okay.
Braden?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Albert?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
And Weedman?
Aye.
Great, consented and approves. Next on our agenda are the action items, and for the benefit of the government students here today, these are the items that have been presented to us at previous board meetings, and tonight, we are voting on them. First, I need a motion to approve, please, the donation of $2,500 from the Grayslake Park District.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay.
Weedman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
Braden?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
And Albert?
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. Second, I need a motion to approve the purchase of student Chromebooks, Chrome Care Warranty, and Cases, as was presented to us.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Braden?
Aye.
Albert?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mack? Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
And Nash?
Aye.
Motion carries. Third, I need a motion to approve the World Architect Fee Proposals for the 2026 Media Center renovation, the 2026 Exterior Envelope Improvements Project, and the 2026 Site Improvements Project at Frederick School.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Albert?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
Braden?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
And Weedman?
Aye.
Motion carries. Fourth, I need a motion to approve the engagement agreements for the interim Director of Operations and Maintenance with Gewalt Hamilton Associates and the Professional Services for the 2025 Construction Projects, as presented to us.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay.
Mack?
Aye.
Braden?
Aye.
Albert?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
And Nash?
Aye.
Very good, motion carries. Finally, I need a motion to approve the resolution for the non-renewal of a first, second, and third-year probationary teacher, Maria Pilar Garcia Perez.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay.
Miller?
Aye.
Nash?
Half screen.
Albert?
Aye.
Braden?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
And LaCroy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Those are the end of our action items. The board does not have any unfinished business this evening. The board also does not have any new business this evening. That leaves us with some topics for future agenda items. I'll turn that back over to Mrs. Gluck.
Yeah, I can share these for Dr. Glickman as well. So, our next meeting will be on April 23rd. At that meeting, we will have our Park Campus students at the table again, and they will do a presentation. We'll have our sustainability discussion. We will be seating new board members. They, we have our Frederick School Assistant Principal hire, our Director of Multilingual Services hire, which means cake.
It will be cake.
And food service renewal with organic life. May 14th will be Board of Education photos and Board of Education meeting dates approval, Board of Education committees. We will be doing a fine arts overview presentation. We will have GMS students back at the table on May 14th, and then a Safety and Security Committee update. That's the only meeting in May. In June, June 4th, we'll have another Sustainability Task Force report, a Resource Conservation Committee update for Ed. Renewal. And then, June 18th, we will be providing a strategic plan update. Anything else?
No, you just had to say cake, and it would have been okay.
Okay, perfect.
All right, yes, please.
I'm just curious if you know when we might have a next policy meeting? It feels like it's time. I don't think we've...
Do we have any public comments signed up for this part of the meeting?
We do not.
We do not, okay? We do not have a need for a closed session this evening for the board, so I need a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
So moved. Second.
Okay.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
Albert?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
And Braden?
Aye.
Very good. I want to thank our student board members for joining us at the table and for your leadership in your schools. This meeting is adjourned.